Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call the order. The Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 at 7:00 P. M. Board meeting room at thirty-nine Bank Street Southeast, Chatham, Virginia. Ms. McCluster, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Ingram?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
Present.
Mr. Dalton?
Here. Would you all join me in a moment of silence and then we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you all. Moving to item five, agenda items to be added. Are there any items to be added to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman. I've got several listed here, items to be added to the agenda, and I might just read everything on it. How about that?
Yep.
Make a motion to add the following items to the agenda: EMS billing as seven Q, PCC Section six-six revisions as item thirteen A, clerk of the board designation as item thirteen B, interim county administrator as item thirteen C. And, Ms. Chairman, that is what we need to add, and that'll be in form of a motion. Thanks.
Motion by Mr. Dudley. Second. A second? Second by Mr. Tucker. Any further discussion? If none, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Yeah, I hit it once and it didn't go. Now it's gone through.
We're good.
Yeah.
Good. All right. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you all. Moving to item six. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Ingram, second by Mr. Bowman. Any further discussion? If none, we're ready to vote. All right. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Moving to item seven, the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Tucker, second. Second by Mr. Height.
Ms. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no. If I could, you got a second, right?
Yes, sir.
I just want to, on the consent agenda, I want to identify Mr. Rufus Fuller. If he'll please stand up. He's on the consent agenda.
Okay.
And he's going to be reappointed to the DPCS. So I appreciate you, Mr. Fuller, for doing that. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Any further comments? If not, we're ready to vote. All right. Motion passes unanimous. We move into item eight, our presentations. We'll move to the front of the board meeting room. All right, gentlemen. Ms. McCluster, would you come up? And all your family members, have them join us also? We have a resolution here for Ms. McCluster that was recognized at the state national level, excuse me, and I want to read the resolution, but I also want to make a comment because I'm kind of, I'll take a little credit for her being here. In December of two thousand twelve, I had the opportunity to interview some ladies for a job, which was my assistant in the building and grounds maintenance department. And Ms. McCluster was chose for that. So she's always been a great asset to the county, and I feel like I made a great decision that day, and I'm just glad she's still here. With that, I'm going to read the resolution. The Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Resolution Number twenty-four dash zero-six dash zero-three, honoring Kalen M. McCluster for Clerk of the Year Award. Virginia, at the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, the board business meeting on July eight, uh, June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the following resolution was presented and adopted. Whereas Kalen M. McCluster, a certified municipal court clerk for the board, was recently recognized by the Virginia Municipalities of Clerks Association, and whereas Ms. McCluster received the Clerk of the Year Award at the VMCA's annual conference on April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four in Charlottesville, Virginia, and whereas the award is regarded as the state top honor for the municipal clerks who was innovation committed to professional development committee, community environment demonstrates extraordinary individual job performance as well as a positive own job attitude, and whereas the award was based on nominations process clerked throughout Virginia and reflects Ms. McCluster's dedication, hard work, and committed to her job and community, and whereas Ms. McCluster provides direct support to the board as well as the county administrator and regular assistant of the board committees, commission, and departments within the county as well as coordinating meetings and events as part of many duties, and whereas McCluster is dedicated to her career, continues learning, having earned a CMC designated in two thousand twenty-two, and is currently pursuing her master's municipal court clerk's designation, and whereas McCluster was elected and has been serving as the VMCA's secretary since March of two thousand twenty-three. Additionally, she has served as Virginia Regional V Director on the VMCA Educational Committee since two thousand twenty-one. Continuing her dedication service in these roles outside of her work has also volunteered her time to serve on numerous committees and participates in a wide range of community events, and whereas McCluster has served the county for twelve years, and her wealth of the institute's knowledge is invaluable asset to the organization, and her professionalism positive has now an impact on the county as a whole. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the board of supervisors expresses deepest congratulations and amends her to Ms. McCluster to accomplishing and extending the best wishes to her and all her future endorsment, given under the hand this eighteenth day, June two thousand twenty-four, Darrell W. Dalton, Chairman of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, Robert M. Tucker, Vice Chair of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. Thank you. Any more comments? Anybody? Now we have to fit Mr. Tucker.
All right. It's my pleasure this evening to recognize the Reverend David Abernathy. If he'll please come forward. A lot of you may know him. Some of you may know him intimately, especially if you've spent a little time over in Sheriff Taylor's place. He may have visited you while you were in there or in the Danville jail down there. So what we're going to do tonight is we're recognizing him on his retirement, and let me read this here. Honoring Reverend David Abernathy's retirement. Virginia, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors adopted the following resolution at its business meeting on June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Whereas after thirty-five years of serving as a chaplain to the Pennsylvania County and in the city of Danville, Virginia, with Good News Global, Global, Reverend David Abernathy is retiring this summer, and whereas he and his wife Liz are Danville natives and were married in nineteen seventy-six. They actively led music and youth programs in area churches, and Abernathy spent ten years in the retail new car business prior to becoming a missionary. And whereas prior to joining Good News in nineteen eighty-nine, Abernathy was a volunteer in the county and city jail and served two years on the local Good News Advisory Board, and whereas affectionately known as the Rev, when behind jail walls, Abernathy ministers to a total daily population of more than five hundred inmates as well as correctional staff and their families. An essential part of his area ministry has been the addition of over one hundred volunteers from local churches, agencies, and organizations. And whereas during his tenure as chaplain, Abernathy recognized the need for innovation and programming for inmates to develop life skills while in jail to reduce recidivation, and a number of talented individuals provided the inspiration and knowledge to implement programs unique to Southside Virginia, such as a mobile library for inmates, positive outlook for a new youth speakers bureau, creative writing class, and the national acclaimed Second Chance Book Club conducted by Jennifer Williams. And whereas Abernathy writes an email devotional, the Chaplain's Corner conducts staff Bible study, and serves as a team leader for the Good News Global Chaplain Team, and that consists of chaplains in Virginia, Florida, Kentucky, Utah, and California. And whereas Abernathy received the Chaplain of the Year Award from the Good News Jail and Prison Ministry in nineteen ninety-three and two thousand and five, and he was also a recipient of the Dr. William L. Simmer Award for Excellence in Ministry from Good News Jail and Prison Ministry in two thousand and fifteen. And whereas Abernathy has been an invaluable asset to the county and surrounding community, providing unwavering support and compassionate guidance to those in need. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the board expresses its sincere appreciation to Abernathy for his thirty-five years of service, to the inmates and correctional staff of the county and surrounding community, and the lasting impact he has made on many individuals, and congratulates him on his well-deserved retirement. Adopted this eighteenth day of June, two thousand twenty-four, Kenneth L. Bowman, Chatham Blair Supervisor, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, and Darrell W. Dalton, Chairman, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors.
Is, there we go. There he is. I couldn't miss you. Delegate Phillips has something for him.
Thank you for all you've done. So I also want to, well, thank you for all you've done. I have a plaque here for you as well, commendation from the Virginia General Assembly, from both the Virginia Senate and the House of Delegates. Hereby commend and congratulate Chaplain David Abernathy in recognition of his retirement after thirty-five years of dedicated service to Good News Global. And this is offered by Senator Tammy Mulcahy, who sends her regards. Senate was in session today, and also Delegate Danny Marshall, who was in a meeting in Farmville today, and myself, Delegate Eric Phillips. So thank you so much for all you've done. We appreciate it.
Would you like to say anything? I know you're not short on words. Do you want to say something?
As I say, that is a dangerous thing to give a preacher a microphone without question. Okay, okay. But I'm very, thank you all. That's very gracious, and I'm very humbled by such acclaim. I feel certainly that's a lot of, that's a very kind gift for somebody that just got up and showed up. And that was a simple thing for me to go in to share hope, to certainly those who are incarcerated, but to their families who struggle when someone is incarcerated that you love, but to correctional officers, sheriff's deputies, who have an extremely, extremely stressful job. And so to just go in as a pastor of those groups for thirty-five years itself is a great reward. And I'm very grateful to you all for your service to the county, to this community, and appreciate what you do. And each day, knowing that as you go into meetings and all of those meetings that you go to and the many things that you do, I'm very happy myself that you are there and I get to be in jail. So Ken, thank you.
All right. Moving to item nine, hearing of the citizens. Each person addressing the board on the hearing of the citizens should be a resident and landowner of the county and arrested agent of such residents or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and direct the district in an audio tone of voice for the records. Nonetheless, further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during the hearing of the citizens. All remarks should be addressed to the board as a body and not any individual thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of forty-five minutes. Any individual that is signed up to speak during said such section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priorities at the next board meeting. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Do we have anybody signed up, Ms. McCluster?
Yes, sir. Willie Fitzgerald?
Welcome, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Good evening, Chairman Dalton. How you doing?
Doing good, sir.
Yes, indeed.
To all the board members, good evening. My name is Willie Fitzgerald, and I lifelong resident of Pennsylvania County and a proud resident of Banister District. On Friday afternoon, I had to take my wife over to Danville, and I was riding my motorcycle. Hunt won't see it. In doing so, you know, there was an incident down here at the bridge, at the radio station, Banister Bridge. And traffic was backed up on both sides of the road, but the southbound was continuing to move slowly. So I went to Danville, and on the way back, when I got to six forty, they were diverting the traffic down six forty till fifty-seven come back up into Chatham. And going down six forty, I had to do some moving about to get my motorcycle to mix some of the potholes and place it on six forty. And I got home and I thought about it. Last month, they were here talking about a six-year plan on highways, and I don't know how six forty fits into it. But something needs to be done about six forty and those potholes. They've been patching it for years and for years. I think the citizens of Banister District need something done on six forty, put it on some kind of agenda, not just to go in and patch it, and then six months or whatever later on, the patches coming up and the bumps are back in the road. So I thought as a citizen of Banister District, and I'm speaking not for me because it doesn't affect me, but I'm concerned about the residents of Banister District, and I would appreciate whatever method or whatever you need to do to address that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Wayne Robertson?
Welcome, Mr. Robertson.
My name is Wayne Robertson. I live in Ken Bowman's district. I have come again to oppose the construction of a new jail out here to the cost of sixty-two million dollars. Previously, I have given you some alternatives to doing that. Camp fifteen and the National Guard Armory and redoing the school board office over here. I have had no response from anybody, none of you or your staff. Nobody has contacted me. You can do better than that. I would expect somebody to talk to me about it. Another issue that I have not seen addressed is the idea of school safety. That proposed new jail over there is right across the road from two public schools. Nobody can guarantee that nobody will ever break out of that jail. If he does, where's the best place to find hostages? A school. If he can break out of a jail, he can break into a school. You're going to have to address that issue, too. I'm not trying to be ugly to you, but these are issues that you really have to address in public. And I know you can't call everybody, but everybody doesn't come and talk to you about issues. I'd like somebody to talk to me about this, staff. I know y'all are busy with a lot of things, but I've given you three alternatives to spending sixty-two million dollars on a new jail. We need to look at something else. School safety, that's a terrible place to put a jail right across the road from two schools. Thank you for your attention to these issues.
Thank you, sir.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McCluster. Moving to item ten, our public hearings for zoning. Pursuit to Article five, Division six of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance, the board of supervisors being empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues, zoning map changes in support of said ordinance and accomplishing the most important task. The board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the fair of this and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The Board must ensure that all decisions and regulations be directed to those goals and each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. In case R dash twenty-four dash zero zero six, Ms. Ragsdale.
Good evening, Ms. Ragsdale.
Good evening. Case R dash two-four dash zero zero six, Frank Teis has petitioned to rezone two point nine-nine acres located on State Road seven ninety-six, Coleman Road, in the Banister Election District from R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A one Agricultural District to allow for the placement of an accessory structure on the property where there is not a dwelling. Once the property is rezoned to A one, all uses listed under Section thirty-five dash one-seven-eight are permitted. The staff some reason closing the board packet. On May seventh, twenty-twenty-four, the Planning Commission recommended by a six-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Mr. Chairman, Frank Teis is here to represent the petition, I believe.
All right. At seven-thirty P.M., I open the public hearing in case R dash twenty-four dash zero zero six. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, sir.
Do you need to add anything to it, sir? Thank you. At seven-thirty, I close the public hearing in case R dash twenty-four dash zero zero six. Mr. Tucker, the pleasure is yours.
Mr. Chairman, in case R dash twenty-four dash zero zero six, I move to approve the rezoning of two point nine-nine acres from R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A one Agriculture District to allow for the placement of an accessory structure on the property.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. Tucker, a second by Mr. Dudley. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. We ready to vote? You're good, Mr. Height. You're good.
Mr. Ingram.
I'm going to vote yes. Mine didn't come up.
Mr. Whittle.
Yes.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Yes, sir, your property is being rezoned. Thank you, sir. Moving to case R dash twenty-four dash zero zero eight, Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R dash two-four dash zero zero eight, Sheroli LLC has petitioned to rezone zero point eight-nine acres located on U.S. Highway twenty-nine North in the Banister Election District from R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to B two Business District General to allow for the sales, service, and repair of automobiles. Once the property is rezoned to B two, all uses listed under Section thirty-five dash three-six-five are permitted. On May seventh, twenty-twenty-four, the Planning Commission recommended by a six-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Staff some reason closing the board packet. Mr. Chairman Linda Sheroli is here to represent the petition.
All right, thank you. At seven-thirty-two P.M., I open the public hearing in case R dash twenty-four dash zero zero eight. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, sir.
Do you need to add anything, ma'am? You're good? Okay, thank you. All right, the pleasure is yours again, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's see, for sale service and repair automobiles, I'll come out of retirement.
Yeah.
I offer a motion in case R dash twenty-four dash zero zero eight, approving the rezoning of eighty-nine hundredths of an acre from R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to B two Business District General to allow the property to be used for the sales, service, and repair of automobiles.
I'll second that motion also.
All right, we got a motion by Mr. Tucker, a second by Mr. Dudley. Any further discussion? None? We ready to vote? Yours come in, Mr. Dudley?
Mr. Ingram.
Yes, yes, indeed.
Mr. Ingram.
Yes.
Mr. Whittle.
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Your being rezoned. Thank you, ma'am. Mm-hmm. All right, moving to case R dash twenty-three dash zero seventeen, Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R dash two-three dash zero-one-seven, Daryl and Gwendolyn Avery have petitioned to rezone one point eight-zero acres located on State Road seven thirty-two, Little Creek Road in the Dan River Election District from R C one Residential Combined Subdivision District to B two Business District General to allow for a daycare facility to be operated on the property. Once the property is rezoned to B two, all uses listed under Section thirty-five dash three-six-five are permitted. On May seventh, twenty-twenty-four, the Planning Commission recommended by a six-to-zero vote with opposition that the petitioner's request be granted with the proffers offered by the applicants. Staff some reason closing the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Daryl and Gwendolyn Avery are here to represent the petition.
Thank you. At seven-thirty-four P.M., I open the public hearing in case R dash twenty-three dash zero seventeen. Do we have anyone signed up?
We do. Shelby Tate.
All right. Ms. Kate?
She says she relinquished hers.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is that the only one?
Anyone else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do you have anything to add, Mr.? All right, thank you. All right. At seven-thirty-five P.M., I close the public hearing in case R dash twenty-three dash zero-one-seven. And the pleasure is yours, Mr. Height.
Well, six months later, we're going to get this done. The proffers were given to the county, agreeing to the child daycare only, and that's what all the neighborhood wanted. So we finally got, I think everybody's happy. So I'll make a motion on case R dash twenty-three dash zero seventeen, rezone from R C one Residential Combined Subdivision District to B two Business District General with the petitioner's request that it be granted with the proffers that were offered by the applicant. I'll make a motion that it be approved.
Second.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Height, a second by Mr. Tucker. Any further discussion? If none, we ready to vote?
Mr. Whittle.
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Mr. Avery, y'all's property is being rezoned. Thank you, sir. All right, moving to item eleven, Unfinished Businesses. Mr. Hunt, do we have any other unfinished business?
No, sir.
All right. Oh, twelve, any new business?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. All right, moving to item thirteen, we got matters from the work session, thirteen A. That is...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Tucker.
From the work session, I'll make a motion to authorize county staff to advertise public hearing at the board's July business meeting for the following potential changes to Pennsylvania County Code, Section six dash six, that we increase or the increase of the income threshold to thirty-five thousand dollars. This is in relationship to relief for seniors and disabled individuals on taxes. Two, increase the net worth threshold to seventy thousand. And three, increase the exemption maximum to six hundred dollars.
Six hundred, oh, fifty.
That's my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Motion by Mr. Tucker, a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Height. Any further discussion on the motion? If none, we ready to vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Whittle.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Moving to thirteen B.
Mr. Chairman, I have this one. I make a motion to designate Kalen M. McCluster as the clerk of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors per Virginia Code Section fifteen point two dash fifteen thirty-eight.
All right, we got a motion by Mr. Ingram.
I'll second the motion.
We got a second by Mr. Tucker. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. We ready to vote?
Mr. Whittle.
Yes.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Moving to item thirteen C.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, I have that one as well.
Yes, sir.
It's an honor to make the motion appointing Mr. Vincent Shorter as interim county administrator for a period of six months at a salary of seventy-five thousand dollars over his current salary as treasurer. The Board of Supervisors intends to conduct a comprehensive search for a permanent county administrator during Mr. Shorter's tenure as interim. And that is my motion, Mr. Chairman.
I think we need to add effective July, uh, July.
Yeah.
July one.
I couldn't read my own writing. You was wording about yours.
Yeah, and the motion includes to make it effective July one, twenty-twenty-four. Thank you, sir.
Motion by Mr. Ingram, a second. So we got a second by Mr. Whittle. Any further discussion? If none, we ready to vote?
Mr. Whittle.
Yes.
All right, motion passes five to two. All right, thank you. Moving to item fourteen, our board members' reports. Mr. Height, do you have anything you'd like to report on, sir?
Uh, I'd say, this past month, we had a community meeting with Anchorstone Developments at the Ringgold Volunteer Fire Department to meet with the community to discuss their proposed Madison development out on fifty-eight. I thought that was a nice meeting. A lot of questions were answered, a lot of questions were brought up that folks may not have thought about. And I really appreciate all the citizens that came out and the folks from Anchorstone that were so willing to give their time and hand out their business cards and tell folks, hey, you have questions, please call us. They're more than willing to meet with the residents out there, so I really appreciate that. And also, you know, we as a nation will observe Juneteenth tomorrow. And we need to be thankful that we are living now in a country where people are free. That that was a dark page in our history, and I'm so thankful that we've turned that page. But we don't need to ever forget what those ancestors of folks went through. And we appreciate their faithful service here in this county and to this nation. I think we live in the greatest country on the face of the earth. We have more freedoms probably than any nation out here. And I think sometimes we, we take those freedoms for granted, and we need to be thankful that we have now a society. If we disagree with each other, we can disagree peacefully and talk about our differences. You don't always have to argue. You know, most time, I'll hear you if you're quiet and calm. If you're loud, I'm going to normally run you out of my office. But I do appreciate the opportunity to be in this great country, to serve this great county that we live in. And as we talk of that, in just a few weeks, our nation will celebrate its birthday. And we need to be more and more thankful every day that we have the freedoms that we have. Is it great for everybody? No, we still have work to do as a nation. We still have work to do as localities. But we need to always be willing to roll our sleeves up and work together. And together, there's no telling what we can accomplish. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Height. Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, first, let me say to the board at large, thank you all for a wonderful meeting this evening. Again, congratulations to you, Ms. McCluster. You do most of the heavy lifting and make our jobs relatively easy. I want to give a shout out to the pastor that goes in or is retiring. And I said to him, well done, because on that day, the Lord will say to you, you fed me when I was hungry, and you visited me when I was in prison. And you're going to say, well, I never saw you. The Lord will say, when you did it to the least of these, you did it to me. So thank you for that committed service for thirty-five years. Tomorrow, echoing the sentiments of Mr. Height, is Juneteenth, when African-Americans in the great state of Texas were finally informed that they are free. And I say to everyone in this room and everyone that's watching online, yes, you know, we have our challenges here in this country. Today is Election Day. We live in a culture wherein society is divided and politics has its animus. And, you know, the country has a myriad of problems, and everyone complains. But yet, I'm military brat, and I served in the military. Well, I will remind everyone that the line is longer to get in this country than it is to get out of this country. So we have to be thankful for what we have. And I just want everyone to be aware of that. Again, good meeting tonight. We've done a lot of work in a short period of time. So let's go figure out, oh, one last note. Mr. Angier, Chuck Angier texted me this morning, and the reason that he's not here is he is one of the captains at one of the polls. And I want to give a shout out to those volunteers that are working the polls on Election Day that give of their time and of their energy freely to make sure that we continue to have our voices heard. So thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Dudley?
Um, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank everybody for all of the cards, the text, the flowers, just reaching out to me and saying, hey, look, I'm thinking about you, or I'm praying for you. And I lost my dad, and, you know, it's honestly a relief because he was suffering, and it's made us suffer to watch him suffer. So I want to thank the Lord for taking him home. And I appreciate everybody, everybody that reached out to me. Thank you for the flowers. Kalen, thank you for everything that you did, the staff, the board here. But it's not only about me tonight. Mr. Tucker stole some of my thunder, because I've got a text that says, tell the board I'm not there because I am an election official today. Chuck Angier is very, very dedicated to come into work session. When nobody wants to show up at three or three-thirty, Chuck's here, very dedicated to what he does. He and his wife are both work at the election officials. And I just, Chuck's a big, big asset to the county. Also, I want to thank Vanessa's here tonight, her and Jim reached out. Thank you so much. That means, that means a lot during the time that I was going through. You know, this past weekend was Father's Day, and it was very difficult, and I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Also, I don't want to leave without saying this. We need to lift up Diana McFarland. She is our Public Relations Director. Her son, thirty-five years old, died this week, and completely unexpected. And I just ask everybody in here tonight, and earshot, to just lift up Diane, because that's, that's a tough thing. So thank you all for coming this evening, too. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. June is what's called move-over month, and I know a lot of people like to camp out in the left-hand lane. But that's the lane that you should be in when you approach any law enforcement officer that has somebody pulled over, any law enforcement activity on the side of the road. And between the eight deputies that we've lost and two state troopers here in just Pennsylvania County alone, they were hit by motorists who failed to move over. Trooper Henry Brooks in nineteen fifty-six, Deputy Sheriff James Bryant, and Constable David Payne. So I did want... So I did want to remember those guys. Eighty years ago, on the sixth of June, a bunch of young men from all over this country left England and stormed the beaches of Normandy, better known as the D-Day Invasion. My daddy was part of that invasion, and it was the beginning of the end of pure evil as the Allied Forces pushed Adolf Hitler back to Germany, and you know the end result of that. And that was eighty years ago. Had a wonderful event I attended, Celebration of Life, Danville, Pennsylvania Cancer. It was a celebration for their cancer survivors, from those surviving one year right up to forty-five years. And if you don't know about this organization, if you know anybody that has cancer, ever so minimal, if you will, reach out to them and let them help you. It's totally nonprofit. We just honored our fathers on Mother's Day, as Mr. Dudley said, just last Sunday, that is, and, you know, it's a special calling to be a father, but it's a more special calling to be called a daddy. Likewise, I wanna remember Diana, our PR rep, and her family. And I did want to extend a welcome and a thank you to Mr. Shorter for being willing to accept the interim county administrator position. Mr. Reverend David Abernathy, it's been a real joy, the thirty-some-plus years that I've known you, and you have truly made a difference this side of heaven, no doubt about that. And finally, our favorite clerk, Kalen, congratulations. Every honor that you've ever gotten, you've deserved it, and you do us a great job, and I appreciate that more than you'll ever know. Thank you. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Now, you ain't got but three minutes, and two of them's already gone.
And what I was gonna say is, a lot of these have already been covered because you started at that end, see? That was good. You did good. So what I'll do is just go over a couple of these here and, again, prayers for Diana McFarland and her family on loss of her son. I know this is tough. It's a tough time that she's going through. Congratulations, Kalen. Good job there. Also, Delegate Eric Phillips was here earlier. I think he's already left, but to present the plaque to Reverend Abernathy there from the General Assembly. That was, that was wonderful having him here. I wish he could've stayed longer. And Reverend Abernathy, my wife Brenda said that she's sorry she couldn't be here, you know, to see you and Liz, but congratulations. She's working the polls. She's one of the inside people today. I attended the West Piedmont Planning Meeting on May the twenty-third. That was a great meeting we had out there in Martinsville. Also attended the Chamber Annual Awards Banquet on May the thirtieth. Lot of people recognized there during that banquet. Probably one of the nicest banquets I've been to with the Chamber, and more Sparks and her team are really doing a great job there with the Chamber. The, I attended virtually, because I was on vacation, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO, meeting to review the highway projects forecasted within the region this month, and the first meeting of the Beautification Committee was held last night at the Chatham Library, and I'm really excited about that because we had five of those people that have been appointed by the board show up. We had about an hour and a half meeting. Our next meeting is July the sixteenth. We're gonna have that at the library conference room over there also, and they're really excited, and they're doing things a little different. We tried to identify a chairman for the committee, but none of them wanted to take it as a full-time chair position, so we're trying something new. They're gonna rotate the chair position each month. So I said, let's go for it. Let's give it a try and see what happens. So I'm real excited. They've got a lot of great ideas. I think you're gonna be real pleased with some of the projects they're gonna bring forward. And then lastly, thank you to the citizens, and Mr. Tucker touched on it, and those doing their civic duty today by working the polls and voting today. It's a, it's a great privilege. It's a great honor to be able to do that, to go out and elect those folks that represent the citizens. And so those folks that took the time out to go vote, those folks that signed up to work the polls, kudos to them. I was number seventy-two when I voted today at Twin Springs, so I hope everybody had a chance to do that. And that being said, did I get within my two minutes?
Yeah, you done good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Bowman. All right. Mr. Whittle, can you tap some of your time?
Oh, thank you. Just wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight. Thank Mr. Shorter for stepping up to the plate over there, and thank our staff over here that does all they do to just keep me great. Thank you. And y'all have a great Fourth of July if I don't see you.
Thank you, Mr. Whittle. Well, everybody's done stole all my thunder, but I'm gonna say thank you again. Now, I wanna thank all the staff and the citizens for coming out tonight. Thank you, staff, for all that they do. Let's keep Diane and Mr. Dudley hearing your thoughts and prayers. They've had a rough time here lately. Wanna thank Ms. McCluster. Thank you for all that you do. My Reverend here, thank you for your years of service. And also, I can verify that Chuck was working because he was at Gruden High School.
Was he?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I voted this morning.
I got you.
I guess the only thing y'all didn't cover, I had the opportunity to attend the Smith Mountain Lake Association Day at the lake. It was a great event they had up there. They was teaching water safety, they had a water rescue team up at Scruggs's Road, community, demonstrating, just a great day. So I had the opportunity to do that, and with that, I hope everyone has a safe trip home. Have a nice Fourth of July, and we'll see you at next month's meeting. Mr. Hunt, do you have any remarks or comments, sir?
No, sir.
All right. With that, me-